For this meeting of the Lewisburg area school district. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you to everyone who has come out in person this evening. It's always fantastic to see so many people in the community interested in what we're doing here. Just a couple of announcements, the full board is here in person. We did meet an executive session following our last board meeting on January thirteenth for about an hour. We also met for forty-five minutes an executive session before this evening's meeting. And we, I'll say that later. Again, if there was anyone who did not have a chance to pick up a yellow card, if you did want to speak to the board and on an agenda or a non-agenda item, please pick up a yellow card. And with that, I will turn to Dr. Ball.
Okay. This month of January is school director recognition month. And I would like to announce that in keeping with tradition, we have set of books that will be dedicated to each school director and placed into our school libraries so that our students can enjoy them. The books are here. I don't know if any directors want to say anything about the selections that were made with the help of our school library. I'm just super excited. This is like almost my favorite meeting every year. So thank you for these. They're wonderful.
Yes, I would just like to add that it's, you know, there's nothing better that you could do for us than to put books in the libraries on our behalf. So thank you. All right then. Thank you very much. And then we turn to citizens comments to the board on agenda items. Are there any citizens comment, comments? On folks in the room? John, any from online? All right. Then we turn to the board representatives comments and I will start with you, Mr. Rule.
Thank you very much. A lot of wonderful things are going on at Kelly right now. With getting so close to Valentine's Day, we've had some community partners reach out to us about having our students help to make Valentine cards for some of our local nursing home residents. So all of our grade levels are participating in that. So we're working with VNA Health System and Law Insurance to be able to get those out into the community. So our kids are very eager. They take beautiful cards and love to do that. So that's something exciting that our kids are participating in. We're also continuing our partnership with Bucknell Athletics. We do a virtual reading opportunity as part of Black History Month. So we will be partnering with some of the athletes coming up in February. Earlier this week was the one hundredth day of school. If any of you remember with your children going through, that's a huge deal, especially in kindergarten and first grade. So saw some things that we see every year, a hundred pom poms on shirts. Lots of things written. For the very first time, I saw a blow up walker that a kindergartner brought into school on the bus coming in. And yes, she had her hair up dyed gray and was all ready to go. So it was a very exciting day, lots of fun activities, counting and the kids just absolutely loved the hundredth day of school. So there were lots of fun things, great pictures up on our Facebook page. Just the last thing that I want to share with you, we recently had a new family that was moving to Lewisburg and they were in town visiting and wanted to get a little tour of the building. And we do this frequently and took around the kindergartner and the second grade students or sure showed them around the room. But I guess just the thing that made me so proud is walking into each of the rooms. The students just on their own instinctually just came up and greeted the kids. Some of them even came up and just hugged them for the first time that they ever met them. And it was so amazing to watch the look on the parents' faces as they're worried about coming from a different state into a new community that they don't really have any roots here. And to just feel like their kids are welcomed already on the very first day was very rewarding to see. So again, that's a credit to our staff and especially to our students with the kind of community that we have at Kell. So those are my items for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wetzel?
Sure. Thank you. So next week we have KJ Raymond Snyder Wagner coming to the school on February fourth and PSA has been phenomenal this year with really reaching out and trying to find as many opportunities for our kids as possible. And these, this was one of the opportunities they reached out about and we're partnering also with Lindtown to get assemblies in both schools. So she's going to present a positive attitude anti-bullying message to the students. So we're excited about that and we've really started a process to yes, it's January, but the end of the year will creep up before you can even think of it. And just thinking of what are the opportunities we can give to our student, students, excuse me. So it's been exciting looking at opportunities and different presenters we're going to have come in. We've lined a bunch of those up and I'll wait kind of as we get closer to those throughout the year. So we're excited next week to have that kind of kick off a new round of different assemblies and opportunities for our students. The next thing I wanted to share, it's always wonderful when you have a real world authentic learning experience. And especially with young kids when they get passionate about something. So this week we had a couple of students that felt there was not enough time to eat their lunch and then buy snack, that they needed more time for lunch. So Mr. Crocker jumped on that opportunity. Scrapped his writing lesson and they focused on persuasive writing. So it was great to get a whole stack of letters with all the reasons why we need to extend lunchtime and keep that in mind because there's just not enough time for them to eat their ice cream and talk with their friends and have lunch. So I'm excited to continue making my way through those letters and then follow up with that class and see what we can come up with. To acknowledge what the hard work they put in and try to find a compromise here, even if it's short term, just to acknowledge everything they've done. And thank them for taking that initiative and running with it. And the last thing, and I think this, this really could be from each building, but something I think we're all aware of, but just to highlight, this year has really put different strains daily on staff and it's been phenomenal how everyone's come together and worked as a team. Kind of dropped what they're doing and helped cover from one class. We've had people covering all over the place and even if meetings are coming up, just to provide coverage where they can. So you can come into Lindtown at any point and see different teachers helping out in different ways. We want to make sure we have it covered for the kids and we can keep their day as normal as possible and keep them getting the instruction they need. And it's just awesome for myself and I know everyone else here to see that on a daily basis. And I just wanted to thank everyone for everything they've done there and just kind of give them that recognition.
Thank you.
Passing on to Mr. Rosen.
Wanted to congratulate Mrs. Ishai and Mr. Hewitt, who's her long-term sub. They had ten students invited to participate in the Susquehanna Valley Band Middle School Festival last Friday at Shikleme and they are chosen as middle schoolers for their skill and their instrumentation, but to be recognized, to have such a large group recognized and at such a young age. Mr. Hewitt is in his last week of being a long-term sub. And he'll be taking over the reins at Milton High School as their band director. So we're very fortunate to have such a high quality individual filling in for Mrs. Ishai. And she'll be back in a couple of weeks. Chris mentioned the partnership with the university with Bucknell. And I'll mention a small partnership that we have through our Listening Post program. It's now back up and running. Students are back in the building. The Listening Post, for those who might not know, is a, an opportunity for a small group of students to eat in a controlled environment, but a quiet place where there are only six or eight kids. There are two Bucknell students called near peers. They're trained specifically to facilitate these types of interactions with kids that the kids might be led through a discussion. They might have activities. They might have like, you know, just a quiet place where they can learn to socialize with one another. That's not in that hectic world of a middle school cafeteria. So we have eight near peers working with us this semester and Stephanie Gormley, who sets this up for us. We're really appreciative of all her efforts. Really difficult to manage all of that through school closing, through distance learning, through all of these things. At Bucknell and their calendar not matching necessarily with hours, but to get it all up and running and it's been operating at near a hundred percent capacity since they started. And then the last thing is to really echo what Mr. Wetzel has said about the staff filling in for one another. You're not aware, it's really difficult to get substitute teachers into the buildings. They're just not there to come in. And every day we have this thing we call emergency rotation. Where if somebody is out and we don't have a sub for them, how do we get those classes to continue to be taught? But also all of the supervision that the teacher might be asked to do through the course of the day to get that covered as well. So that students are supervised, the students are learning. And it's, you know, almost a daily occurrence that we don't have. It might just be one sub short, but it's, you know, there are four classes that need to get, that need to get covered. And I don't ever want to take it for granted that our staff, our teachers step up and do this. They don't gripe about it. They do it because they know it needs to be done. They're true professionals, but they really, they wouldn't do it if they didn't care about one another or care about the kids and how the kids are making it through their days as well. So a lot of credit to our staff. Josh?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to talk about two clubs. Last week, Kristi Amy's Diversity Club. They painted various pieces of art on the cafeteria windows in hopes of bringing kindness and awareness to all groups of students and people throughout the building. A couple of the pieces of art were accompanied with quotes. Allow kindness to shine was one of them and embrace differences. So those paintings just helped to bring awareness and bring everybody together. And then the other one was this week, this Wednesday, Hillary Crease National Honor Art Society Club went to Cherry Alley downtown. And they were able to observe and study the murals that Jim Reed had put there. So I just want to thank Ms. Crease for organizing that event. So those are my two pieces.
Good evening, everybody. We had the pleasure this week to have our alum Barbara Sprunt, who I apologize for not knowing the exact year of her graduation. Chris, I believe it was when you were at the high school. But I won't ask you to pull that, that year of graduation out, but she is actually a producer and assigned to the Washington desk at NPR. And so first of all, it was just really thrilling one day, you know, last year getting ready, listening to, you know, my daily briefing on Alexa and hearing like, this is Barbara Sprunt reporting for NPR, but she came in this week or via Zoom and several classes signed up to hear her presentation, to learn about what it has been like. You know, covering politics now, right now in Washington, but also just, you know, about her career path, other choices that she had considered making some future career changes she would made. And she really stressed that it's okay to not have everything figured out right now and that the career that you have right now very well will morph as you, you know, go through your journey. And so it was just an absolutely fantastic job. I thank Dr. Zach for setting that up. And like I said, it was just, you know, it's amazing when I think of her, I knew her first as a visiting second grader touring Kelly with her family in the summer. She wasn't placed in my classroom, but outside, you know, she was my Velcro recess buddy for the first couple of months of school until she, you know, really felt like that she was integrated into her class and things. So to see this, you know, shy second grade girl grow up and to be this strong professional woman that is covering politics and to be able to share that experience with our graduates was just amazing. Another one of our former students was actually a clue on Jeopardy this past week. So you may have heard us talk about Anthony Nyer as we've talked about his bowling accomplishments as he progressed through Lewisburg. But actually a question this week was referencing, you know, what split, you know, that he made on live TV for the first time. But yeah, so Anthony Nyer also known as the Ginger Assassin. So that's just pretty cool when you see a former, a former student being featured as a Jeopardy question. I also had the opportunity this week and you know, it's one of those things that you take for granted, what used to be just an everyday part of your job. But I got to sit down and really have a great conversation pre-conference. You know, with one of our new teachers and newer teachers and then an opportunity to watch just an incredible observation and to really reflect on how he's changed his lesson from last year to this year. And you know, as he talked about APL, which we always put our new teachers through, that has been something that the district has been committed to, you know, for over twenty years. And just to hear him not only talk about the differences and how he teaches because of it, but also to actually see it seamlessly integrated into his teaching. And it's just, you know, hear him reflect and then talk about how that has made him a better teacher. You know, that, that's just is what makes you excited, you know, to come to school. And of course, I'm going to be repeating, I don't think any of us knew that others were saying it, but you know, it was, it was a rough week last week, especially in terms of of staff coverage. And again, you know, these are teachers who are giving up their planning time to do this. So you know, it's, it's, they still have work that they're having to do later, but I also want to put a shout out you know, to the, to the students too about it because you know, our teachers are putting, for instance, you know, we had one, one of our math teachers that was, was out last week, you know, not anybody can just step right in and, and teach calculus. You know, you can have somebody to cover the room, but not everybody can do that. But putting, you know, work on, you know, his canvas, you know, I had the opportunity a couple of times to be in the classroom, but everybody just commented just on how well the students have adapted to it. And that's stressful for a kid when, you know, they don't have a teacher for a number of days that's their content teacher. Especially when you have students that might be in AP classes or, you know, also the teachers as if they've been working, you know, kids coming in and out of their room with remote instruction. You know, one teacher today was like, okay, so like he was ready to give a quiz, like who's, who feels they're not ready? You know, because they've been out and that there were, you know, six kids that he had to make adjustments for. So these are decisions that our teachers are just having to, or circumstances that our teachers are having to adjust and adapt to, you know, each day and, and also our students. And they have just done an incredible job of being cooperative and flexible and just really rolling you know, with, with what the day has to bring. So, you know, just a shout out to both the staff and the teachers or the students. Thank you.
Thank you all. It's always great to hear what's going on in the buildings. Our next agenda item is our presentation of the Sun Tech Institute 2022-23 Proposed Operating Budget. This is Jen Hayne.
Thank you for having me here this evening. My main goal is so that each of you have an opportunity to ask questions about our budget that's been presented this year. To help assist with that, I've also created a highlight sheet for you tonight, and that'll be the piece that I review with you. If you do have specific questions about our budget items, I'll be happy to answer any of those questions. On your highlight sheet tonight, you will see that the Sun Tech budget proposed for 2022-2023 is eight point one million dollars, which is an increase of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand plus a little bit this particular year. With the reduced reduction of the revenue that would come in from the state, our budget would be a six point eight million dollar budget, which is an increase of six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Of that, Sun Tech is owned by five school districts. The Lewisburg portion, which is down on the backside of page two is eight hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, which is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars more than the normal increase. The budget typically, if I was to remove the pieces that I'm going to share with you tonight, our typical budget increase would be three percent. In the middle of the document is some areas of change. So if you were to go through that budget page by page, there's going to be some numbers that stand out to you. I won't go through each of these this evening unless you do have a question about them. But to kind of help answer maybe some questions that you may have, some of those increases in numbers or maybe difference, larger differences is due to step jumps, salary changes, retirement, nurse substitutes and the such that's listed. The one area that I do want to talk the most about tonight is object four thousand, which is facilities and repair services to the building. Broken out there, you will see what's called a restructuring project and roofing. Sun Tech has, as you know, been working on roofing projects over the last several years. We're down to the final two roofs of repair on campus and then we will be set for quite some time. I hope I will retire before a roof's due at this point. So that's a good thing. In there you'll see that restructuring project is one point two million dollars. A number of you know that last year we had temporarily closed our electronics program so that we could take a step back in time and look at the curriculum that was being offered and also meet the needs of all five school districts. That year off has given me some time to meet with stakeholders, previous alumni, professors from Penn College and those graduates working out in the field. That research has produced two answers. Our electronics program over the years has been very successful. Many of those graduates have gone on to Penn College major not only as an electronic engineer, but also as a math major, as a second, secondary major. So some as could teach math. So kudos to those students starting through that program. They had earned sixteen college credits the year that they were at Sun Tech. So again, a tremendous savings to the family and also allowing that, that higher math standard for those students. So those students did stress the types of jobs and importance that this program played in their life. Many of them found that half of their classmates enrolled at Penn College ended up dropping out of the major. And that's because during that year, that ramping up of college content at a much different pace than being on campus allowed them to absorb and understand the material. Those students also served as tutors to their aides on, or peers on campus as well. So the program has proved successful. If I was to say a downside, if there were any, is that most of those graduates move out of the area. You can find them as engineers at one of our car manufacturing plants in Michigan. You can find them in Florida at NASA. And you can also find them in Washington DC working under the security. Very prestigious jobs, however, they're not in our local area. Currently, after review with our workforce development board, we also found not only is electronics technicians in high demand locally, also is industrial maintenance is in high demand. This is the person that helps to control the HVAC systems, lighting systems in our school buildings and all the companies that we work in. It's also, if you love ice cream like myself, they help to repair and keep that ice cream line moving at, at Wise Markets as well. Or if you're a coffee lover and you like Oaks's coffee, that individual is helping to keep that manufacturing plant moving. So they're the jack of all trades, someone that can fix a piece of equipment that's down to keep production on the move. The individual that can create a customized part where you can no longer buy it. So again, another job in our area that is in very much high demand. So our school board, JOC, has been presented with a tough decision. After much thought and information presented, we have chose to move forward with a necrotronics program, again, still following the engineering program. This will allow us to meet local jobs here that we have a need for tremendously. Students can also still continue in the pathway through Penn College, through PC now as they start at Sun Tech or also go into electronics engineering. So with this, the restructuring project that you're hearing about is a roofing deficit area that needs to still be addressed. But with it also allows an enlarged space with additional workspaces as COVID has created many challenges for us. On the backside of your sheet today, you will find a photo of our west campus. And with the areas that are shaded green is what considers the restructuring area. This project will allow us to address a shingle roof area. When Playworld housed in this building, they connected nine different buildings or additions onto this to the course of the life of this building. So with it has created some challenges. So the roof we're looking to address right now is a shingle roof that has areas that has led to a number of leaks over time because of the design and unplanned addition of this piece. So this will allow us to address this section of the roofing properly as well as create additional workspace stations for students. You'll also see there are additional facility pieces there as well that were in our normal five-year plan. As part of the restructuring project, you'll see that there's a full buildout, which is a cost of two point two million or what's considered the shell at one point seven five million. The difference between the two is the shell addresses the roof and the basic outer structure of the walls. The full buildout will allow students to be in that workspace. We understand these current times, money needs to be looked at closely and not just taken for granted. Down below, you will see also that Sun Tech has pulled our resources together through grant matching, adult education, a house project, and we are going to be taking one million dollars from our funds and have asked the districts to fund one point two. Now, going back to the Lewisburg portion, what I'm asking you tonight is this budget increase is the Lewisburg portion would be a hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars more than the plan. But looking at it, I'd also like this board to understand what we'd like to use for expanding education and also repair the roof in the west campus. So I know that was a lot of information. Some other pieces that have been asked is this is a one-time expense. It's not something that's reoccurring every year. So that I do want to assure you as well. So with that, I'll open up to whether there's any questions or need for clarifications to mention.
Thank you. And your presentation is very thorough. Do you have a prioritized list if we can afford shell plus some buildout? Is there like you would do these things first and?
If you look at the sheet that's proposed, you'll see if we go with the full buildout, I have a deficit of six, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars. So I'm continuing to work on some opportunities here locally to help address that. But in the past in projects, I believe in doing a host of alternates and getting the most money and opportunity for the district possible. So I will move forward with this project in that same manner with alternates.
Are there other questions for Mrs. Hayne? Thank you so very much. I do, it was very thorough. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is a proposal for a graduation project from Ally Zimmerman Comas and Rudy Christiansen-Grohl.
So my name is Ally Comas.
And I'm Rudy Christiansen-Grohl.
And we're hoping just to present to you our senior project. And maybe show you sort of the system overview of what it is, how it works and how it can be beneficial, some of the more needy logistics and some of the legacy behind it. You can go to the next slide. Okay. Okay. So the basics of a food forest. Something's missing, but that's okay. So there's sort of the philosophy behind it. Is that it's like a, the practices are actually thousands, like go back thousands of years and are even still relevant today. And I think I, you can attribute that to because sort of the basic philosophy behind the system of agriculture is that you're mimicking natural ecosystems. And then so some more of the system of how this, how this mimicry actually works. You can see here, this is what you call a guild. So our project would probably involve three, two to three guilds that are about eight by eight feet and twenty-five feet apart. And the way the guilds work is, is they have plants. And the way the guilds work is is they have plant species that support each other. They all sort of contribute in different ways to this mini ecosystem that'll that'll provide nutrients for people like us and also help keep the land healthy as well. Yeah. So you could go to the next slide then.
Okay. So this is where I want to jump in. Ally's kind of touching on this project from the food forest perspective with plants. I'm doing more of my research on pollinators, specifically wild pollinators and how I could. Utilize plants in the system to attract wild pollinators to the space and then also just to our campus. So you can go to the next slide. So just a couple of facts about bees that I wanted to point out. Bees pollinate about one and out of every three bites of food that we eat. So that's, in my opinion, that's very startling in that a lot of the food that is a part of our food system is directly influenced by bees. Ninety percent of plant species rely on bees to produce, so they support trees to reproduce. So they support trees, plants and flowers. And then, so you can read some of the stuff that I have up on the slide, but essentially I think having a way to attract wild pollinators to our campus could really benefit. The entire ecosystem, but also just contribute to the project by supporting the fruit trees. That would be a part of the project as well. So here's a list of just some of the research that I've done about different plants. That could be a part of the project. Not all of these would be included. So I still have to kind of sit down with Ally for the final planning and decide exactly which ones we'd like to include. It would not be all of these. But the idea is that Ally would kind of work on the guild and the food forest and I would figure out some plants that I could put in that would attract pollinators to the project.
Okay. So some of the more logistics. So obviously we've already started planning this project and we have a lot of things already moving towards completion and actually installing it. One big thing that's that we've done is we've already found a good location. We spoke to Mr. Wagner about using some of the space that's at the top of the chestnut tree nursery that's already here at the high school. And the benefit benefit of that space is really it's already fenced in, so we won't have to worry about deer munching on all of our progress. And then some more of the finances are like, how are we going to pay for this? Well, one, it's not really a very expensive project. Fruit trees are about twenty dollars depending on the variety. Mulch is is not very expensive. And and to pay for what little we will need to pay for, I know from my past experience on student council that they're very happy to support clubs through student council grants. And all we would have to do is apply for a grant through one of the relevant clubs like Beekeeping Club or Future Farmers of America Club here at the high school. And then if that grant from student council isn't enough to fundraise our project, we have. Sort of more individual fundraising calling businesses that might have some of the products that we need and asking if they would donate for an educational purpose. And if if even more fundraising is still needed, but there are some more traditional methods we could use. Some some sort of sales or something. And then so the construction, like what's involved in this, how are we going to be changing the land of the high school? It's pretty minimal. It doesn't really, it won't really have like very permanent impacts. You know, you won't stop by the school and see Rudy and I pouring a concrete foundation anywhere. But it will take basically mulch entries. Those are the two biggest things and I think that's pretty reasonable. And then to actually get the work done, we've. We've talked, we talked to Mr. Wagner, the faculty advisor for Future Farmers of America about. Taking people from his club who would be interested in in learning and volunteering to help to help actually install this project once we've done all the planting. And then one thing I forgot to mention on the on the overall food forest slide is that this this is pretty relevant to L S D. A lot of the curriculums here at the high school with some of the environmental science classes and some of the some of the clubs. And then additionally, some of the curriculums, I believe in Kelly. Would be able to utilize this space and and help contribute to it as well.
So just more of the timeline of everything and and what we're kind of looking at with this. The month of February, we're looking just to continue planning and any fundraising that would need to happen, we could start thinking about that. We put on here, continue planning because we have given this a great deal of thought. We put in some time to go out, take some measurements, figure out where we can. Effectively put our food forest and et cetera. So I would be continuing the planning. So in March. We can hopefully if it's warm enough, we could start the process of actually installing it. April would be great to, you know, hopefully it'll definitely be warm by then. We can actually start getting some hands on the project and and installing it. And then kind of the big elephant in the room is we're both seniors. We're not going to be here next year. We don't want this to just go away. So we're thinking about that in the process, but also have some ideas of. We had possibly talked to Ms. Reber about if someone else who's also has an interest in this would want to. Use it as their senior project in the future. That is something that could happen. Other ideas are again, using some of the clubs or some of the curriculum here at the high school to incorporate that into it as well. It's a very nice location because high schoolers can have access to it, but also if Kelly wants to use it as well, they could definitely utilize the space. So that's kind of what we have. And we just wanted to thank you for your open mindedness and listening and open up any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Sounds amazing. I'm like, it'll be a great learning experience, not just for you all, but for everyone who gets to sort of participate in it. Is this, is there anything we're supposed to be doing action wise?
This can be an action item at the next board meeting since we are planning the trees.
Okay, great.
They're permanent.
Fantastic. You go. I'm glad that senior projects are back.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next presentation is Mrs. Reber or Dr. Baud. On the update on the high school program and studies.
John, are you putting that up? Thank you.
If there are two documents, the first one, John, is a PowerPoint that highlights the overview and the second document is what the board typically sees. When there are program enhancements and changes. So I would start with the PowerPoint.
So, Dr. Ratt, I this is the first I've seen it in the PowerPoint form. So I'm gonna do my best here from on this perspective. So go ahead, John. So first of all, you know, every year we come and before we get the course selection guide and put that out. We bring any major changes that will be taking place in that. And so everything is really a domino effect and is interrelated. So I'll start first with our science changes. So first, for the twenty-two and twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Our ninth graders, what we are proposing as that we will have, sorry, I'm just. Going to go by what I have. We're going to go by, basically, we will have two different options for our ninth graders. So part of the reason we're doing this, and as we've been looking at our our science courses. Is we want to give them more flexibility and opportunities as they progress through. Which right now, the way that our ninth grade science courses are, we create a bottleneck as it goes into tenth grade. So students, especially if they are interested in the sciences, they're often doubling up biology and chemistry. At the same time, they're trying to fit in their required health class. At the same time, they're trying to get in that visual arts requirement that they need sometime during their four years of high school. And so there's just, and if you're in music and if you are in ensembles, it can make it particularly challenging. So the other thing we wanted to do as we were looking at this, we recognize that. The ecology on standards in particular, our students really need those as they sit to take care. To take the Keystone exams, which are still required to to be taken for the student after the course. That that the district has selected, which of course is biology in this case for that. So what you see are two different options. So there is the. The the students that have the option of taking biology for a full year, their freshman year. And then also taking ecology along with that. So they have those ecology. So it'd be a credit and a half. That those students would be taking in ninth grade and they would sit that year for the Keystone test. Other students might choose to take our traditional trajectory, which is ecology and environmental in ninth grade. Then in tenth grade, they would be taking biology and they would take the biology at the end of their tenth grade year. Now, there's still a piece of the environmental and certainly we've just heard with Rudy and and Ally's presentation that has a very viable fit. And needed fit in our curriculum. We're seeing so many of our students that are going on. Whether it's, you know, more of a traditional, you know, role in environmental, but we're especially with sustainability and things. We also are looking at the development of a new environmental course here at the high school. And it's really, we want to tap into the new science standards. We want to be able to really make a course that really hits. On some of the aspects like with sustainability and biotechnology. We're super excited about the addition of the greenhouse. And we see, you know, the opportunity existing, you know, both with that and also, you know, if it goes through of of. This project with the food forest in future years and as well as some STEM materials. So that group in the the class that takes the ecology environment. They would have one credit in science at the end of their freshman year and the students that do biology and ecology would have. You know, one and a half, as I said, but they would need an additional point five credits of environmental. At some point in their high school career because that is something still that is important. Dr. Bow, did I cover everything that you have on your slide?
Yeah. And I would say in talking with the science teachers, Ms. Moser, Ms. Reber and I, we looked at. If we wholesale moved biology to ninth grade, we'd have. Less opportunity for kids to take other science electives and that was really a concern to the teachers. We would look to the students based on their P S S A scores and the different. Knowables within there, the kids that we feel would be the strongest students in the sciences would move into biology as ninth graders. But this still does afford them and it's important as Ms. Reber was sharing. The opportunity to take other sciences and environmental still being one of those, but biology being one of those foundational science courses. They can have that their first year and then the world's a little bit more open for them going forward.
John, go ahead with the next slide. Sorry, I'm just.
And this is pretty much just.
I I know, just trying to share it all.
Catch up here.
Um, you know, I talked about the environmental. The other thing, and is there still a separate slide about capstone or should I? Okay. Um, so it will also the change in science will make it easier because with the bringing on of the capstone. On the AP capstone project that also in tenth grade is where seminars recommended, which again, we would have that bottleneck of. Classes that we typically see for our ninth graders since they go into tenth choices. Other changes that are listed, there also is a point five credit of applied technology and business at some point. That is required. Now, one thing that I do. That wasn't finalized, I am assuming, Dr. Bow, that this would be with this year's incoming freshman class that we would do that. So obviously, if a student has already started in their sequencing of courses, we aren't going to throw that in as a surprise. Now you have to do this. Also at the end. And then also we did include and spell out some of the things and courses that are part of. The visual arts requirement. So right now, just to make sure that students fully understand what counts as a visual art. So for instance, graphic design right now is in our technology department, our technology teacher teaches that, but that could count as your visual arts. Likewise, photojournalism taught by Mr. Russell, even though he's an English teacher, that certainly would fit into the visual arts. And then, of course, all any of our classes there, you would still need any prerequisites and things for that. So for instance. And computer sci- AP computer science, you know, that would count as one of our technology, applied technology courses. But there is a prerequisite of taking an additional computer course or technology course before that. So there would be, you know, certainly the prerequisites are still required as they are listed there that that would still follow. Johnny, can go ahead to the next. So as we're looking at AP capstone and AP seminar, so the presentation I gave last year. Our board members that have been on received that newer board members that I did include that in a weekly update. So hopefully you had the opportunity to click on that link and and become a little bit more familiar with that program. And so as we've been looking at, you know, where best to fit seminar, which first of all, you know, it. Again, tenth grade is both recommended by college board. And really is the best fit for where it should would fit into our curriculum. It doesn't have one set requirement. It's not assigned like, for instance, AP biology is obviously a science when AP government is in history. Seminar and research actually don't have a specific curricular area assigned to it. So it depends how the school chooses to offer it. In terms of how it will be represented in your graduation requirements, where it fits in. What type of credit it is or what type of curricular credit it gets. So the two options that really make the most sense in Lewisburg. We had looked at it filling the social studies requirement in tenth grade. Currently, our students have the opportunity to take either world history or AP European history. So they would have another option, which is to take AP capstone, the seminar course in tenth grade. Now, remember, this is not based on a particular. Skill or concept. This is actually our, you know, in terms of content. It teaches them the skills such as analyzing, evaluating information, synthesizing. You know, really digging into that area of passion and that they want to invest in further. But we would do it with a from a global and world perspective for that, which is why we would tie it into the social studies. Portion of tenth grade. Now, that doesn't mean a student still can't take. AP European history if that, you know, they could take it in tenth grade or they could also choose to take it in a later grade. It actually creates more flexibility within that. The other place is that it's. Often put in is in the tenth grade English area. We're proposing the social studies, but the English is another popular area that is put into. Now that would, we'd have to adjust what we have our. Where our Keystone literature takes place and then we would have that opportunity too. There's a lot of research behind, you know, why you should put it in your in your tenth grade curriculum. I will say with our staffing and, you know. The way our curriculum is devised right now, it dovetails more. Into our social studies than what it would in the English department mainly because of the staffing aspect. When we come down to the options for it, again, you could either waive the course requirement. For all students or for the capstone students or we could waive elective credit requirement. I don't know, Dr. Bow, if you want to talk a little bit more about that.
There are a few considerations there and John, if you kind of roll up the slide, we'll be able to the other direction. Yeah, okay, an illustration. So looking at it from a perspective and and we've many students in this situation where they take both band and chorus. And we could see very quickly if they're taking seven credits each year, they the gray. They, the gray shaded area represents where they have their electives and everything bold is what's required. You start to see that we really don't have a lot of flexibility. A student in this scenario who's in band and chorus already has 2.5, well, the one music would count for it, but 1.5 credits between the arts and the applied technology, they wouldn't have as much room. Uh, are, of course, some of the AP classes that students would take would already be fulfilling what the requirement is within that subject area. So if they're taking AP chemistry, AP biology, AP government, they're already falling within subjects. But students may want to double up or take something that's, um, like our AP art class or they may want to take something that, you know, is outside of the subject area per se, um, where we have those requirements. So we're trying to be mindful with implementing the AP capstone program in a way that provides more opportunity for students. It doesn't limit what already, um, is just limited by the time of the day and how many courses students can take. Um, so hopefully that kind of illustrates a little bit of where our, our, our conundrum falls in there. Of course, we want to continue to have high standards for students. We want to see that they're taking the most rigorous courses they can. The AP capstone program certainly gives them that distinction if they take the AP seminar and AP research class and then any array of classes along with their AP, um, tests and score three and above, but can have that distinction on their diploma and that's something that, um, certainly better prepares them for apology experience when they move on to that after graduation.
Is there any other slides, Dr. Bow, or is that? Um, and then the only other thing that I would add, um, you know, in terms of training, because you do have to be trained, um, to take this course. They have not yet announced their, their training schedule for the summer that is supposed to be released sometime this spring. Um, so, um, you know, in terms of when and where and, um, how that, that is one piece. Um, and certainly a big piece that, that's still, um, we're waiting to hear.
Thank you. Are there questions? I, I just had a question about the, um, I don't remember, John, can, can you go back to the presentation, sorry? The, um, the, the tech, um, tech ed or business, is that what it was called?
Applied technology.
Applied technology or business course. Uh, I didn't see where that would fit in in the illustration. Is that because it could fit in as science?
Any of the electives, yeah.
Okay.
Where any of the electives.
Okay.
You know, if they take computer science.
Right.
That would be an elective, but it would also fulfill that credit.
So there's a little bit of flexibility about how some of those, where some of those would end up counting, whether they would be electives or fill in as a science, for example. And then those options that you offered, it wouldn't be necessary to, to waive anything if the AP, uh, seminar, um, had the social studies designation, right?
Counted for the social studies.
Right, then there's no need to change. Right, because that's, that's baked in as because that is a social studies course. Yeah, okay, thanks. Are there any other questions? I have a quick one. So if a student selects AP seminar, they do not have to take neither world nor AP Euro?
No, but they could if they wished, if they wanted to.
But it wouldn't be required.
It wouldn't be required because we would do seminar, for instance, when they're choosing their project and their topics, it would be based on a global world perspective. So with seminar, because it's not geared towards, like I said, the, uh, particular content that gives the flexibility for you to put it in whatever curricular area you could. Um, but then to have it count as a social studies, it would need to be taught by a social studies teacher, obviously. Um, and we would want to make sure that there still is, um, you know, that emphasis and that students are still getting, you know, they're getting their civics and economics in ninth grade. They're getting their American history, but we still want to make sure that, that they have that broader global view, um, and, and in the 11th grade year.
Are we at the point where we accept alternative credentialing for some of the prerequisites? Like if you were going to take AP computer science, but you took, you know, an online intro to Python class and showed a credential that was transcribed, would that, would that be acceptable?
We have not yet, but although that could certainly be something, you know, the, that we look at. So currently for AP computer science, this year was the first year, um, for that. Um, so we had put in for that, the, um, having a, it's either you can take it as a math credit because it is taught by, um, Mr. Leopold, um, our math teacher. Or again, it can count as your elect, an elective credit. So it could either be their math choice, um, or, or their elective choice. We do ask that they have a prerequisite of having some type of computer or technology course the previous year. Part of that reason may be addressed by adding this ninth grade requirement for kids as they go through to take something in applied technology. But that was a way to have students, um, be exposed or, you know, students who might have before said, eh, you know, I'm not interested in introduction to engineering or advanced prototyping or CAD or anything like that. Um, and a lot of that was because of weight, to be quite honest, that a lot of the students in class rank, that they didn't want to go and, and look at those because they weren't weighted credits. The AP computer science, taking that, that is, it, it created incentive for some students that, okay, I'm going to have that computer course so that I can go into. Whether we accept outside credentials, I think is something we can certainly look at. I do want to, I, I would suggest that we make sure that we do that in, in equitable manner so that it, it doesn't just become who has the knowledge or who can afford or who has the opportunity, um, to get to an AP class faster and get that weighted and that it's, it, there's equal opportunity for all students.
Our math track is like that, though. Lots of students accelerate in math by taking an outside class.
They do it, and so are you asking, can they accelerate?
No, I'm saying there's, we already have an inequity issue. Um, I wouldn't try to make it worse, I'm just saying.
I was gonna say, that doesn't mean we, we make it worse, yeah.
Um, no, I'm saying that the model, that model does exist where we say, okay, you've had, like you took geometry online over the summer, you can start in algebra two or something.
Well, then you would have to go through the acceleration process and follow the, the policy guidelines to do that.
Are there other questions? I appreciate how very complicated this is and how entangled it is, and I, I thank you both for your hard work on this. Um, we move on now then to, um, old business and our first item is the revised COVID sick leave memorandum of understanding with the LAEA.
So the next three, actually, um, first beginning with the LAEA is a revised memorandum for the administrative leave. It has a sunset date of April 19th, which is our return from our spring break. Um, that's also the date of the health and safety plan where we were set to lift masks. Um, so we want to make sure that we're tying, um, the availability of that administrative leave with, um, when we're taking our most restrictive precautions in school.
Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding? So moved. Moved by Dr. Jablonski, is there a second? Second. Seconded by Dr. and Superfusero, any discussion? I will call them, please call.
Ms. Tanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequitur Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And the next item then is the memorandum of understanding with the Act 93 Administrators. Same, same revisions. Moved by Dr. Jablonski, second, seconded by, is that Ms. Stanton, any discussion? Roll call vote, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequitur Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the final one of these is the memorandum of understanding with the non-union support staff and central office functions support staff. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, second, seconded by Ms. Hanos, any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequitur Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, the next item of old business is the, um, partnership agreement for Minifon with the, uh, Four Diamonds Penn State Health Children's Hospital.
And this is, the Minifon is back, um, this year, and this is the agreement with Penn State for us to be able to hold our Minifon.
Their motion to approve this agreement?
So, second.
Moved by, is that Dr. Unsequitur Fisero? And seconded by Dr. Jablonski, is there any discussion?
This is no different than any other year, right?
It's going to be a more mini Minifon.
You mean by the agreement?
Yes. Okay. Since it was brought to us as a, as a separate action item rather than consent, I just, I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything that, anyway.
Any other discussion? Uh, okay, Paula?
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequitur Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, and then we have one item of new business, which is our first look at the 2223 district calendar.
Is, is this action or is this information?
Uh, it's on here as action.
It's on here as action, it can be information. Um, it could also be action depending on, um, any questions that might be there. The calendar pretty much is following the same pattern that we've had in the past couple of years. The, the significant difference is starting school the week of August 22nd with our HBAC modernization project. We want to make sure that we have enough time for that to be completed and for things to be cleaned up. So giving us an extra week, i- it's better to predict that it's not maybe going to come in perfectly 100% on time and have that time built into the calendars and surprise parents as they're making, um, any of their vacation plans for the summer. We, we have the staggered start. Um, one other change is, is that we have one in-service day in the beginning of the year because that in-service day for staff is moving into the school year. Um, with the staggered start, not all staff have all of their classes. So they do have some additional time to finish their preparation at the beginning of the year as well as their one day that they do have to, um, come in after July 1st. Um, that also may be, um, a little tighter for them depending on where construction is in their building and their location. Um, one other addition that's something that's a little bit different is to have for election day for that to be an in-service day for our students. Um, it certainly helps, um, with some of the traffic flow that we have at the middle school with voting and, um, and parking and just having the students out at the building for that day, um, allows us to have it in service, which is always more valuable towards the beginning of the year than it is as we get into the end of the year. Um, our last day of school would end up, um, with this one week of later start, the June 6th.
So should we approve it or is the idea that if people have questions, we would wait?
We can table it and then if there's any questions, go to final approval, just to give everybody.
We traditionally have always had it as information as a first look to love the community and, you know, and all that, uh, district, even within the district have, uh, have a first look. But I mean, unless, is there a reason to move forward with it tonight? So I would make a motion to table it.
Uh, second.
Moved by, moved to table by Mr. Fetzer and seconded by Dr. Jablonski, any discussion of tabling it?
The legends are a little bit off.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Um, all right, then I think we can just take a voice vote on tabling it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Then we shall table this and bring it back at our next meeting, giving folks a chance to look at it and think about it, us as well as the community. Um, and that brings us to board information. Um, I will, um, skip the president's report tonight, given the number of folks here who are interested in speaking. Um, and that brings us to the assistant superintendent's report.
You have my report at your place. I chose to highlight two pieces. I will just briefly summarize, we had a great in-service day on, um, January 14th and we used the morning for some much-needed cable group discussions across 19 curricular and program of study areas. Anytime you can bring the professional staff together to collaborate, to share, to work together, uh, good things result. I highlighted a few bulleted pieces by content area. They had tasks in an agenda. There was a faculty member scribe and all shared in a Google folder. What this does for us is form some next steps, next tasks per content area where we want to continue doing everything from articulating, uh, courses as they are revising in content areas like the science courses that both Paula and Dr. Paul and Chalk referred to. Um, the related arts K to 12 get few chances since they work in, uh, in all different buildings to come together and talk and share and plan. And that was another good piece that occurred. Our counselors and social workers, as I highlighted here, uh, had opportunity as well. Uh, so a very good discussion format for the morning. Many faculty members hoping it's the, uh, first of more meetings to come to accomplish again, reviewing, revising, refining our curriculum across the many content areas. My second piece I shared with you, uh, is in reference to the ELL program. And I shared with you that while we waited quite a while till last week to get last year's WITA access scores back in our very disjointed school year last year, uh, we also received some very, very good news. Um, I shared with you again, a couple of bulleted points about our program. Uh, we are serving fewer students this year and I know here that transience is often something associated with designing and delivering ESL programming. Uh, while we have fewer students, our test results that returned to us on the 58 students from last year show our students growing in their English proficiency across the four domains that are assessed, listening, speaking, reading and writing respectively. I'm happy to also report, as I've summarized here, the number of students who, uh, assessed performed to the level that they are able to exit the program of direct instruction and move to a monitoring status. That is, um, a very important step in their developing their language proficiency. And as I indicated to you here at the last point that I've written, um, they're exiting at, if you will, just the right time at the end of a, of a K to five elementary emphasis on literacy and English language, making them more prepared to move into the middle and high school secondary content areas. They're going to be able to obviously work, uh, in their classes with their same grade age peers and have access to the content, removing the language barrier that often precludes some of their success in the classroom. So again, I have it in summary for you there at your place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moser. Um, we have then board liaison and committee reports. Is there, are there any, um, committee liaisons that would like to?
The AI you met and we went through the proposals, the first stage of, uh, the budget, which we'll have at the next meeting. We'll walk through it then.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. That brings us then to the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to have held out and voted on separately? Then I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Unsequitur Fisero, any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unsequitur Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh, director's comments, I'll start with you, Ms. Lyons.
Um, I think we heard some really great things tonight. I think the presentation of students, I don't believe ourselves here, but it was really exciting to hear about that. Um, I have a fascination with bees, so anything that has pollinators coming into the area, I think is great. Um, As always, it's, all the schools are very wonderful. I hear mostly about Kelly and Lintown, that's where my students are. So we had a frantic 100 days of school, or 100th day of school. I will say, I'm not a big theme person, but I know the kids love it, even though we're constantly dragging things out in the middle of the night to succeed with them. I was able to see some of the diversity paintings. I wasn't sure where they were from, but we were here for wrestling this weekend and they were really awesome in the cafeteria while we were having our food there. And that's about it. Thank you. Ms. Stanton?
I just want to thank everybody, especially at all the schools, again, for all the incredible work and wearing all the hats. Everybody's been great and the kids have been adapting so well and that's refreshing to hear. So thank you for that. And I think I'm going to actually just turn it over. I know we have a lot of people that are here, they don't hear so much from me.
Thank you for the recognition with the books. It's always a lot of fun to, to receive those. As we've joked the past couple of years, there's always a book about an animal, given my honor. Although, I'm not sure how much to read into it because there's also a book about the Cold War and a book about the assassins. I'm not sure where I fall here, but, you know, with all getting aside, thank you for the recognition. It's always a lot of fun to note that the books are in the library. And almost every year I get a picture from a parent, a student that, that are like, oh, this is so cool. We got the book and your name's in it. So again, it's, it's always exciting. So thank you.
I will also keep my comments brief. Again, thank you to everyone, to the students, to the teachers and to the staff for everything you're doing to pull it together and help each other out in times of absence and needs recovering. And also it's great to hear about former graduates, you know, sharing their success with us. That's a great testament to how they feel about the district. I'm going to keep my comments short because I see a lot of people here that are probably wanting to get out of here just as much as me. I just wanted to comment for Mr. Wetzel that my daughter this morning on the way to school was very excited that she gets to come talk to you because of the horrible conditions of the, the time that they don't get to eat their ice cream. So be aware. She's excited that your daughter's coming too. So she said, I think we have some leverage there. And I said, or maybe not. I'm glad you shared that, so.
I will be short and sweet as well. Also, thank you for the books. And I will sound like a broken record at the end of all these meetings. I think our teachers and staff just need a huge thank you every meeting and every day. We are fortunate to have kept our schools open every day so far this year. And I think there's a couple of reasons why that's the case, but a huge piece of it is because of our teachers and staff and the students as well. But the teachers and staff will always get a huge kudo for that.
Thank you. Dr. Jablonsky?
Yeah, I mean, I would repeat what everyone has to say and again, thank you, hearing about an emergency rotation and all the staff and teachers covering for each other is just, that's not sustainable. So we need to say thank you every time because we know there's a light at the end of the tunnel at some point. But most importantly, we should not be remiss to recognize some really important people who are retiring and that these people are special to my children. Ms. Christini, Mrs. Zach and Mr. Krauser, my kids have had all of them and love them a lot, a lot. So thank you so much for your years in the district for getting kids excited about gym and math and life. And so we will, we will really miss them. It's really hard to replace those personalities.
Thank you. Mr. Heath? Dr. Paulinchock?
I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. I just, Dr. Jablonsky took the words out of my mouth. I just want to, on behalf of the board with gratitude and regret, accept those retirements and resignations from three longstanding, much-loved teachers who we will miss. I also, as always, want to give huge thanks to the Green Dragon Foundation, whose generosity seems to know no bounds. Meeting after meeting, we are accepting their contributions and we are so grateful. And of course, as an author and an English teacher, I can't help but just be giddy about the books. So thank you again for that. And that brings us to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. As is our practice, we will begin with any comments submitted online. Alrighty, then in the order in which they were handed to me, Tara Michaels. You can come to the podium if you'd like, but if you'd prefer to stay there, that's.
Come on Tara. Sure. All right, so Tara Michaels, I think I have to read my address.
That's actually here on the card.
All right, great. So I'm usually a little more comfortable talking at cornhole tournaments or dragon dashes. So excuse me if I stumble a little bit on this very, what I consider a serious topic. So I am here to ask you to consider abolishing and getting rid of the contact tracing program immediately. I know that your health, health and safety plan is not to be evaluated until April, whatever that date is. But I ask you to consider doing it immediately. It discriminates against unvaccinated students unfairly. As we know, many vaccinated adults and boosted adults are still getting and transmitting COVID. So pointing out just the unvaccinated students is very unfair in taking them out of schooling and activities. And you, you all know, because I've sent you lots of emails, our son was asked in front of his whole class, were you vaccinated? Yeah. And he didn't answer. And the teacher asked the others, another student, the same question and they said yes. And he said, good. So just sharing that with you. I understand other schools have done this. So I know that Seale's Grove has done it and has said they've had a great response from their population, this, the parents, because it's allowing parents to not worry what they're going to do with their kids when they're unvaccinated or not unvaccinated, excuse me, contact traced. I know you all have data on the positivity rate related to contact tracing within the school. And I know that that number is very low. So also Danville, as you know, just recently got rid of their contact tracing program as well. And I believe Central Columbia, and there may be others that I don't, Meadowbrook and others. But those are my points. I did send to you a letter, an email. When, you all know this, but I'll tell you all, when people started hearing that I was coming to talk, they were getting in touch with me and teachers got in touch with me. And they, they don't want their names announced, but they are staff and they wanted to share their experiences. And so I'll read it to you. Hey Tara, I'm a staff member at the elementary school. I have heard you were going to try to talk at the meeting tonight. Thank you. Here are some of the comments from various teachers at Kelly. Some things that are happening at Kelly, we are super short staff with custodians across the districts. Our custodian, custodians have spent, have to spend time every day setting up tables and chairs in our parent pickup area for kids to sit at and spread out to eat. PSA was volunteering to come in. They don't come in anymore, but we still have to set it up just in case. Also, we have kids wearing masks and they are unsanitary and ineffective. Some families send the same one without washing them. Kids have food in them and it's not, sorry. They fall on the floor and put them back on. They lose them in the snow and throw them away at lunch. Then they take them off and play with them and chew on them. Teachers have extras, but kids go through, some kids go through three or four in a day. We have some students with very bad home lives and issues such as not having homes or food. The last thing they need to be is yelled at all day to keep their masks up. Contact tracing. We are literally sending kids home because they might get sick. Kids get sick, it happens. We also have found that kids who are testing positive for COVID are not getting that sick. I know in my class, a lot of, and a lot of other classes, the kids getting traced are the kids that need to be here the most. A lot of tracing happens on the bus. A lot of low-income kids get traced because they all live in the same area and take the same bus. When they are not in school, they are not getting fed. There is a large correlation between low-income students and kids who need extra help learning. Forcing them to stay home because they might get sick is just adding to their learning struggles. We are asking students to remember who they sat by at lunch or in small groups, two to three and four days after the fact. Yes, there are seating charts, but they are not always correct. Teachers are spending instructional time hunting down who sat by who and getting work together to send, send home with contact trace students that never get picked up or completed. Some teachers don't like to be masked complete police. We are not anti-mask as some families really believe in them. But for families who don't and only wear them at school, they are hindrance and get in the way of student learning. We are pro-choice for students and staff. Some staffs got vaccinated solely because it meant we would not have to wear a mask. Here we are in masks until April, even after we filed the vaccination recommendations put forth by the district and the ever-changing CDC. If doctors who test positive don't have symptoms are able to return back to work in some states, why are we contact tracing and being forced to mask when we are healthy? Last week, there was a student who was contact traced and had to go home. By the time the school found out, it was day five. She had to leave the class and sit in the nurse. Her dad was out of town and took her mom until 2:00 to come get her. She was allowed to return the next day. Other school districts have masking optional policies. If they are contact traced, they just have to wear a mask. This would be a much better alternative for our district to adopt. Kids are getting the variant of COVID even while masking, contact tracing and being vaccinated. It is running through the school like a stomach bug or strep has in the past. Why are we treating it so differently? As a staff, we are very shorthanded. Having kids spread out between cafeteria and library spreads our staff even thinner. PSA parents were coming in to help, but have not since the winter break. There are so many inconsistencies with the, when the kids can catch COVID and can't catch, can't catch COVID. The teachers would prefer not to have their names used at the meeting, but they think it's important to know that these, what these rules actually look like in school. They feel like it's a touchy situation be, because due to the climate of the school, teachers are concerned that speaking up will create an even bigger divide on the staff.
Thank you. Thank you. And please convey our thanks to the staff who shared this.
So can you answer questions or is that it?
We don't really answer questions at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Rachel Benny?
Okay. I am for optional mask use and the focus protection of those most at risk from COVID-19. I believe the usefulness of the proposed test to stay program has been OBE overcome by events and wish to see contact tracing end. I encourage you to move beyond the climate of fear and instead consider this phrase, the urgency of normal. For our students and the entire community in truth, it has never been more urgent to return to how school should be. An engaging and dynamic learning atmosphere where communication is uninhibited. I will send the link to the entire 23-page document, but the phrase, the urgency of normal, belongs to a website by the same name on which you can find an open call to rectify the disproportionate restrictions our children still face in 2022. While adults have the option of largely returning to normal life. The authors are 13 physicians and scientists, seven of whom are pediatricians, with 131 cosigners at last count. What they present is a positive way to envision K-12 schools moving forward. I'm going to read their recommendations now. First, maintain in-person learning regardless of case counts. Students' overall health is best supported if daycares, preschools and schools stay open. And this is a huge kudos to this administration, to the school board, to everyone involved in making these decisions that we have been in person for the last 18 months. That is notable. And, you know, in contrast to many districts around even this state. And so thank you for that. Deescalate the fear around getting COVID. Talk openly with children and parents about how well vaccines work and how safe we are. For healthy children, flu is a, or I'm sorry, COVID is a flu-like risk if unvaccinated and almost no danger if vaccinated. Encourage.
Sorry. That will be the precedent.
Encourage children, parents and staff to see mild COVID infections as inevitable and not alarming. Encourage a booster dose for parents, caregivers and school employees, especially of older or in high-risk groups. And again, apply focused protection measures to protect community members who remain at high risk. It seems there's a bit of a shifting in the masking recommendations too, in that the, there was a Washington Post commentary on this where they are considering moving to having the person most at risk actually be fitted for a well, you know, a tight N95 mask versus having my mask protect you and your mask protect me. When, I mean, most kids would rather not have them on, many I should say. So that's just a little extra commentary. Change the focus to supporting students' mental, emotional and social health. Avoid escalating mask rules or other COVID policies. More restrictive measures increase the fear and falsely convey that schools are unsafe. This increases harm to student mental health, which can have major detrimental effects. Please do not treat vaccinated and unvaccinated children differently. Children are not a danger to each other especially. Encourage extracurricular activities and social events without fear. And again, I believe that Lewisburg has done a good job of that because we have maintained the extracurriculars very well. Restore fully normal life and school for all children at the first possible opportunity. As I get ready to close, health is about more than the mere absence of COVID-19. It is time to appropriately balance risks to children's health. Disruptions to normal living can never be harm-free. And it now is, it's time more than ever to stop the disruptions because we can see the effects on our kids. Coronavirus, Dr. Fauci said it himself, it is not going anywhere. It is here to stay. We cannot eliminate risk, but we can reduce it to levels that we've always known how to live with. And Omicron has indeed helped us in that manner as well. So my call to you is to please reconsider the health and safety plan. Possibly at the next meeting, I would say within a very short time, it should be reassessed what the real dangers are. Because just the last six weeks of Omicron has dramatically changed the calculus in what we're seeing. So reclaiming normal life for our kids is the best way to support and protect them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Denise Michaels. And while Ms. Michaels comes, I just want to remind the public that technically you're supposed to restrict your marks, remarks to three minutes. You've all sat here and been very patient. And so, you know, I'm not timing you, but if you could just try to be mindful of the time, I would be grateful.
Hi, my name is Denise Michaels. Kind of want to address a combination of what Tara and Rachel just spoke about. I would like to address the amount of energy and manpower that has been spent on COVID protocols versus other areas in need. My son was contact traced two weeks ago to a vaccinated student. We received an email and three phone calls to make sure he didn't come to school. Despite that, I offered a negative test or antibody test. He was denied to continue to attend classes as current procedures and protocols do not permit this, which I understand, by the way. I'm just saying, that's what it, what was portrayed to me. The issue I have is the focus on contact tracing and COVID protocols in general seem to be taking away from other very important issues. My student was an honor roll student last year. His grades are slipping this year. I have not received a concerning phone call, an email or even a comment on his report card addressing this. As you can see, it's really upsetting to me because my student has not been called down to the guidance office to discuss what might be happening to him. Instead, we're more concerned about his, about how he's wearing his mask. His, his teacher will turn him in for that, but hasn't addressed the fact that his grades are slipping. He hasn't even met with a guidance counselor and he's a second semester sophomore. What's important here? Are we concerned about education? Like I said, his teacher's more concerned about checking his mask wearing and showing concern that whether he's comprehending or retaining the materials she's teaching. I'm concerned because we have the COVID numbers. We know this. The death rates for young adults under the age of 20 is .0013%. You should be more concerned about the parking lot that you're allowing students to drive in. Student drivers, the deaths in that age group is higher. How many students in this area have been hospitalized? And while I know that COVID has been a concern and science, we all want to follow the science, we need to continue to follow it. And while I know that COVID has been a concern and science, we all want to follow the science, we need to continue to follow it and understand that the mental health issues that we're concerned, that we're not concerned about here, we're too concerned about making sure that nobody is getting COVID when we know that kids are absolutely living with COVID. We need to address what else is going on in our school, the mental health of our students. Our high school principal should not be taking the time to make COVID-related phone calls and worrying about masking procedures. Why don't we let our teachers get back to teaching instead of policing? Our administrators back to focusing on the education and our students back to learning. You know, we have a lot of things to work on in this program in our school. And Paula has brought up some great things today about AP, additional AP classes and stuff. So let's be able to focus on that. Let's get the guidance department to be able to bring our students down and meet with them 15 minutes. You know, I mean, so that every student can meet with their guidance counselor. Let's just get back to education, please, and reevaluate this current plan so that we can get our students back to caring about school and stop worrying so much about a virus that we seem to be able to have under control for that age group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Clark.
Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to offer comments. I'm going to take a little different tact in why I think you need to reconsider the health and safety plan and reevaluate it. I'm having some trouble understanding why there is not also a mask mandate for after-school activities and sporting events. That seems inconsistent with what this board has said and what it says as it views the role of masks in keeping our community safe. Many of us in the community are surprised that this newly constituted board would adopt the health and safety plan that is inconsistent on masks by making masks optional on district property after school. That's because the six of you who voted for the masks optional at after-school activities previously strongly advocated for universal masking. Four of you recently campaigned as candidates who quote, "are committed to scientifically grounded protocols needed to protect the health and safety of everyone in the community," end quote. You also promised in the campaign to follow CDC guidelines to the letter and implement a universal mask mandate if elected. Additionally, Director Zimmerman and Jablonsky have made statements while serving on this board that the district must follow CDC guidelines. So I'm pretty surprised that you passed a health and safety plan that does not follow CDC guidelines. Here's the direct quote from the CDC list of recommendations. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. There is no exception in that recommendation for after-school activities. At the December 16th meeting, some justification to ignore CDC guidelines was given, but it was not based on science. Essentially, this board said it was an enforcement problem and you want to avoid conflict with visitors who refuse to wear a mask. I think you will agree with me that this is not a scientific justification, no matter what you believe the current science dictates. Do you believe that current science says masks help? If you do, where does the science support an exception for after-school activities? At the December 16th meeting, Dr. Baugh played a video in which she asked Dr. Frank Mifay from Geisinger about mask mandates. Dr. Mifay stated, quote, "We know that masks work. I endorse that we mask at least through spring," end quote. So this begs the question. You've asked Dr. Mifay for advice, yet you're ignoring it during after-school activities. Now, I'm not necessarily advocating for universal masking. I am, however, advocating for consistency so that our community can have trust in the decisions of this board. Nothing breeds mistrust and contempt more than arbitrary and capricious policies. And it appears the current health and safety plan is arbitrary and capricious in its mass policy. It's just not logical to say everyone must follow the science from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, but after 3:00, you're on your own. That seems irrational. You either need to make masks optional at all times or universal at all times. The current plan is inconsistent and undermines the district's credibility. Again, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mr. Allred.
I just wanted to add four things. Back at the December meeting when Superintendent was justifying why there would not be masks after school for sporting events. She said it was out of, you needed to respect the opinions and beliefs of parents and students of other districts. What happened to the opinions and beliefs of students and parents of your own district? The ones who actually elected you to serve in these seats? Those opinions should matter more to you than the opinions and beliefs of parents outside your district. And those opinions should be respected by allowing the folks the liberty and freedom to make responsible decisions for themselves and their own children. The second thing is I'll understand why the health and safety plan is not on the agenda for every meeting. You know, because of the sunshine law that you can't discuss things without them being on the agenda. COVID is, the directions that we're receiving from the CDC, the information that we're getting from science is changing on a daily basis. And yet you pushed the decision off until April when you really should be giving yourselves the opportunity as a board to discuss it at your monthly meetings. Third thing I will say is that tells off of that is that recently there was discussion and admission by the CDC that cloth masks do not work with Omicron. And yet, members of the school staff are still wearing cloth masks. Cloth masks are still being accepted as appropriate wear for students. What happened to following the science? Again, to what Mr. Clark said, the lack of consistency breeds contempt. And then the last thing I'll say is that when you all wear masks, for those of you that are staff and board members at meetings, it makes it exceptionally difficult to hear. Even our congressmen and women, when they sit in Washington DC, when they're talking in their meetings, they take their mask off when they're talking so that they can be heard and understood. This is especially difficult when you're attending online. So I'd ask you to consider removing your mask when you're speaking in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Derson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Tasha and I work in healthcare. I work at Geisinger in Danville. So I'm very aware of the seriousness of COVID. But I really, my main objective is to speak on behalf of my kids and their friends, which I hang out with a lot because they're actually pretty cool people. So this is what I have to say. I'm going to read it from my paper. I challenge you all to see COVID through the eyes of the kids. When I ask my kids how they feel about COVID and the rules at school, these are their observations. Most of them have seen people get COVID and get through it, especially their peers. They see this in relationship to their activities and education being disrupted often for the sake of COVID. They have observed no huge difference in COVID outcomes despite using the same strategies for the past two years. A logical thinker would wonder, why do we have to do all of this when people are still getting COVID? Even vaccinated people now. They go to sporting events, school activities, and outlining school, in outlining school districts that are not mandating masks and wonder, why are we different? If they're being honest, they are jealous that they cannot have the same freedoms and normalcy. They observe students in the student section at high school sporting events and wonder how they can all be shoulder to shoulder with no masks. And yet in school, they have to sit far apart and wear a mask. They say, how does this really matter? They see our own school administrators who enforce masking in school attend events in other places where masking is optional and observe these same people enjoying their freedom to not mask and wonder why. How can they yell at me for having my mask below my nose and go to a sporting event and not be wearing their mask? The kids were told if we wear a mask, we will reduce the COVID around us. Then they were told if you get vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. This was very incentivizing. So they got vaccinated only to have to be told that, you know, you have to wear the mask. And my kid said, Mom, it was a sham. That was what they said. They tell me the only reason they got vaccinated was to not wear the mask because I think they understand their risk of getting sick or being very ill is low. Then they were told that vaccination would diminish COVID. That didn't work. The kids are frustrated and I get it. I would add that my own observation of parents that mandate their kids always mask up thinking that they are wearing a mask when outside of the home, little do they know, most often, they are not. As soon as they are not out of the sight of their parents, they totally reject the rule. And I can't blame them. You know, they're all doing their own health risk analysis as any maturing critically thinking person should do. I'll close by saying that we know a healthy environment for children is one that is positive and consistent. We know that especially children from chaotic homes find refuge in consistent and positive environments like schools. The past two years have been nothing about that. It's been very inconsistent and certainly not logical. Often, kids are shamed and are punished for not wearing a mask properly or choosing not to be vaccinated. One may say, it's only a mask, just wear it. I think it's far more than that. The kids need normalcy, consistency. If we ask them, I'm confident that they would tell you this. That's what they tell me. They're not being disrespectful or putting people in harm's way by not complying to things that are seemingly not effective. They're rightfully making their own assessment and seeing things through their own lens of risk benefit, and that's what a normal person should do. I believe that the school staff, there are school staff that would side with the kids, that the rules don't make sense. They're observing broadly that they see the mental health effects of the illogical rules on the kids, their activities, and their attitudes. I would hope that the school staff would step up and support the kids if they agree. As a taxpayer, I would like to see the school spend more time teaching and less time policing healthcare policies. We know a lot more about COVID now than we did two years ago, and that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Ms. Ryder.
Hi, my name is Sharon Ryder. I've already sent an email with a couple of my concerns to the school board as well as Ms. Reber and Dr. Baugh, but I did want to mention some of my thoughts to others in the room. I too would really encourage the board to consider what some of the other areas, schools in the area have done by focusing on isolating only symptomatic students and household contacts. I really hope that our district has been assessing the benefit received from quarantining asymptomatic kids and weighing that against the emotional, social, and academic harm done to kids by not allowing them to come to school. My 15-year-old was traced in school and quarantined three times. One only a few days before he was considered fully vaccinated. At no time did he exhibit COVID symptoms, but I can tell you, he exhibited a lot of stress from missing what was being taught in class, trying to figure out how he was going to catch up once he got back. As a middle or high schooler, missing multiple days of algebra, higher-level math lessons is very stressful and puts the kids behind unnecessarily. As was already talked about, you know, the current tracing and quarantine protocol is not keeping up with the current viral spread. It's not making sense. I mean, Omicron does not distinguish between unvaccinated, vaccinated, boosted. And we're seeing that play out. In my email to the board, I referenced a new rule included in the recent Pennsylvania Department of Health contact tracing guidelines in that people ages 18 and up must now have a booster five months after their second shot in order to not have to quarantine after being identified as a close contact. Due to the uncertain risks benefits, the unknown effectiveness in preventing infection and transmission, our families decided not to get boosters for our children. So this means that after February 11th, which is five months after his second shot, my 18-year-old son, if he gets contact traced, he will be required to quarantine at home. But if an unboosted 17-year-old who may have received his second shot nine months ago is traced, he will not have to quarantine. So suddenly, my 18-year-old is more at risk of transmitting COVID to others than the 17-year-old. And I can't quite wrap my head around why a student's age would be a deciding factor if he is allowed to attend school. In my email, I asked the board to reconsider implementing this rule, and I know that it has been implemented because my 18-year-old was traced a couple of weeks ago. And initially, he was told to go home because he didn't have a booster. Thankfully, I had told him about this new rule previously, and he stood his ground and he explained that he wasn't even eligible for a booster yet. They eventually did find his correct records, but all this took way too much time out of the school day. And the whole time, he knew, as he was talking with the administration, the nurse, that this whole special treatment for vaccinated booster people makes no sense because he is seeing his vaccinated classmates test positive. I know this rule will most likely not affect many families, but I bring it up because it's one example of something that just does not make sense. And I just want to make sure that someone is looking out for our kids. We certainly cannot assume that it's the Pennsylvania Department of Health or any other government agency who from day one has not included any kind of balance in their rules. In her response to me, Dr. Baugh mentioned that the Pennsylvania Department of Health does not consult with school districts, rarely consults with the Department of Education. I'm not surprised by that, but that lack of communication is very disappointing. The guidance we're using is titled "Contact Tracing for the General Population." And other than containing a link to the CDC school guidance, it's not very specific to school settings. And the odd thing is that contact tracing isn't happening in our general population. The Department of Health stopped its tracing and phone calls and use of apps long ago, but it's still expecting our school principals, nurses, and teachers to vote a big chunk of time to this process. I just hope that any Department of Health and CDC guidance has been appropriately reviewed before implementation to ensure that it makes sense in a school setting and that it's in the best interest of our kids. I don't envy any of you for having to deal with constantly changing guidance for the last two years. But it seems at some point the school leadership should have the authority to say that district is not going to follow certain rules that cause potential harm to students while providing very little benefit. Thank you.
Ms. Reber.
Hi, Laura Reber. I wanted to thank the board for all your contributions to our community, first of all. And I did speak up a couple of meetings ago and was glad to see at the meeting I was present a really robust review of information in regards to COVID policies. And my request today is echoing much of what was already said, but also expressing urgency for bringing it back up to a full board discussion at the next meeting. I think there's enough that's evolving with the current medical conditions and state of now only the virus. Conditions and state of not only the virus, but what's happening in our community that it deserves another robust conversation. All these stories are powerful, but it's also powerful to have those that were elected have a full discussion of what's going on in the community. There are just two points that, well, one underscores, I don't think is the most important impact of mask wearing on our children, but it's one that. I think is an example of the unintended consequences. That exist with continued mask wearing if we, you know, again elect to continue it through. April or possibly even beyond. And that is our children with special needs. So my example at board meeting a couple of weeks ago was children with speech issues. And that is an example of a broader need. I'm sure of many students that I'm just unaware of, but my specific experiences with speech. And both the speech teachers and the students are fully masked. Now, I liken that to asking a teacher to teach their class with the back to the room. I don't know how you do that, and I haven't gotten an answer from my own inquiries. But it's just one example of. Opportunities for thinking about the relative risks to our students. But the downside of wearing masks and not having the upside of full protection with the masks that are currently being worn. I would ask at the. Next board meeting where the health and safety policy is reviewed, that there be an endpoint or an exit strategy or, you know, whatever we want to call it. That is reviewed and discussed, and I think we've seen nationally that. When some of these policies are rolled back, that there are divisions created amongst students and parents, and it would just really be a shame to see that happen in our community. So I. Hope that part of it especially is around the communication plan with our students and parents about the why. Going a little bit beyond just staying in school, the why, you know, why it's safe, communication about. A virus and how immune systems work and, you know, just even getting into a little bit of the science. It's a great example of. Of, you know, being able to talk about an example of science to our students. So. Thank you again for your time, and I sure hope that it is a full conversation at the next meeting.
Thank you, and I would like to thank everyone who spoke and everyone who came here this evening. Although this is not an issue that the community has complete consensus on, it is definitely something that we all care about a great deal, and I have great respect for. Everyone who came out here to share their views with us, and I want to assure everybody. That we do read the emails that we receive very carefully and we take the comments that we receive here. Very seriously, and we will certainly consider everything that we heard here tonight from from all of you. So thank you again for coming.
Dr. Zimmerman, I'd like to make a motion to add the health and safety plan to this evening's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fetter has moved to add the health and safety plan to this evening's meeting. Is there a discussion?
So Paula, if you could let the minutes reflect according to the sunshine law, if we add a meeting, add an agenda item to our meeting. The specific reason has to be reflected in the minutes, and that reflection is that the community has brought that to our attention. So in accordance with the sunshine law, we are allowed to add an agenda item. So if you could please make sure that's noted in the minutes. The reason I'd like to bring it up, several reasons. Because I was absent at the December sixteenth meeting, I was fulfilling my duties over at Sun Tech, so I was not able to. You know, kind of chime in and participate in some of the discussion. I have requested for the past two meetings, the health and safety plan be revisited. I've been. Turned down that it has not been on our agenda, so I would like the opportunity, especially in the light of many of these. Many of these community members who have come out and and asked us to address it. I think we owe it to not just myself that had to miss that opportunity, but also the community. I think we definitely owe it to the community to at least have a good discussion. I've addressed some of the inconsistencies in the past. Many of them were shared this evening by some of our speakers. But I firmly believe that we're not, our inconsistencies. Are present and we either believe masks work or they don't. We either care about parental choice or we don't. We either want to keep kids safe or we don't. The inconsistencies that we're having right now. Do not reflect us taking a stance in either direction. And I think that's, oh, I again expressed this before, and you know, many parents express this. One of my biggest concerns is that we're singling students out based off of. Turning eighteen, based off of quarantine or lack of quarantine, forcing them to wear a mask. Again, I just, I would strongly encourage the board to at least have an open discussion and be very transparent.
I think there are a couple of things here. So when we did vote, the, my understanding is a lot of the time is we could not qualify for even considering tests to say. Unless we put a mask mandate in during the day. And then the issue was enforcement. At the door to this building, it says masks are still required, and so even if we, even if you'd used the words of people here or people elsewhere. It's going to happen that people come in unmasked, but during the day, students have to be here. You're a truant if you don't come to school and you're not signed up for e-school. But everyone who's here afterwards has a choice, and I think that was the discussion. It's not capricious whatsoever, right? We were making a decision. On science, which says that appropriate masks, right, are KN95s or N95s are the ones that are able to prevent spread. At the same time, our manpower. Are we going to have, as a lot of people have referred to, policing for outside of school hours? It just doesn't seem appropriate. So I agree, right? If we were following perfectly CDC guidelines, all of us in this room will be wearing a well-fitting N95 mask.
But we did not have policing last year when we mandated. Students, athletes were masked last year, spectators were masked last year. We didn't have policing in the gymnasiums during athletic events. Even this evening's meeting, our board leadership spaced us out this way to try to, with the intent of keeping us safer. And as an unintended consequence, we have thirty members of the community who are shoved shoulder to shoulder. As we sit up here, spread six feet apart and their shoulder shoulder tonight. Why are we doing these things? Decisions without the thorough, without thoroughly thinking through this stuff, we just tonight. Put on, you know, if we want to follow the science, this evening, we asked thirty members of the community to come in, speak to us, and we put their health at risk. Why are we doing some of these things? I think we really need a thorough discussion as to what our philosophies are and what some of our inconsistencies are.
Did not require their attendance.
So we don't care about their opinions?
That's a completely different.
They are here, right? And we have listened to them. We didn't, if we didn't care about their opinions, we would have said, no, there's too many. You have to stay outside the door. So clearly we do care about their opinion.
But we just make them sit shoulder shoulder. I'm just, I'm bringing that to light that, again, these inconsistencies. We didn't think through them necessarily. We didn't, maybe we didn't expect a large crowd tonight, but again, we had five or six chairs set up. Right behind our building level principals, and we jammed that side of the room while we all sat. Again, all I'm asking is for a discussion on the health and safety plan.
I think in the past when we've known that we were going to have a larger crowd or suspected that we were because this health and safety plan was on the agenda. We've actually made accommodations for that. Couldn't hear anybody when we were in the auditorium, so that's definitely not the best way to do things. This is unfortunate that it turned out this way, but I think everybody that came in and doesn't have a mask on made that freedom of choice decision to do so. So I don't feel that we put them at any kind of risk. That was their decision. So I'm glad that everyone came here. I thought everyone really actually was incredibly thoughtful. In their comments. I took, I took a lot of notes. So I mean, I think that there are absolutely things that we need to discuss. But when you come into a sporting event. As much as I don't like it to be this way, that is your choice.
I think we need to decide whether we're going to put this on the agenda. We need to call a vote for that.
I think it is also super important to point out that there is a large number of this community. That did not know this was being discussed tonight, and as several of you mentioned, it's important to listen to all of our constituents. And I think.
What's running now is the discussion of whether to put it.
That's what I'm speaking to, whether or not we put it on tonight.
No, no, we have to vote to put it on tonight or not. But we're discussing whether or not.
Feel about how to bring it on tonight.
We have a motion to put it on the agenda. We are now having a discussion of whether to put it on the agenda, which admittedly did stray a little bit, so I appreciate being brought back to that. Right, but what's, what the point is, is we, we have to vote whether we're going to vote to put it on the agenda or not. We're discussing whether or not to put it on the agenda right now. Okay, and then we will vote. We're not discussing the health and safety plan. We are discussing whether or not to put the health.
No, I agree, but I'm just giving my opinion on the vote is that it is important to hear from our entire community. That's all I'm saying. That's my opinion going into this vote. I feel it's important. That the whole community know that this is up for another vote.
And I completely agree, which is why I've requested that a go-through of the appropriate motions to be on the agenda, and I would continue to request. That we not wait until April to revisit this, that we put it on at least next meeting's agenda like.
If I could interject, just as a point of procedure, rather than calling the vote and having a vote on a plan that administration. Wouldn't have had the opportunity to look at how we'd be able to implement that. I can work with this, our Dr. Zimmerman to make sure that it is on the agenda for the next. Board meeting, and that would be February tenth, I believe, at that point, too. You know, everybody's comments are very true, and we're all caught in the middle of guidance that sometimes conflicts. Does it make sense? Different rules for school districts than the community. And if we could thoughtfully look at something that, you know, would be able to keep people safe, certainly. But also honor and respect where the community is, that gives us that opportunity.
As long as I am assured that it will be on the next meeting, I will withdraw my motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, then the motion is withdrawn, and we will be discussing putting it on the next meeting's agenda. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
All in favor, please say aye. Meaning adjourn.